Yeah, I'll call the board of the July 28, 2025 meeting, the special meeting and committee meetings of the Edington Town Council. We'll begin with the special meeting. We have a new agenda item on this meeting's agenda, and it is the consent agenda. And it's actually the first agenda item. The consent agenda is a mechanism that's used by a lot of local governments, municipalities, and counties, and our own local school board to handle numerous matters that normally don't require a lot of discussion and a lot of deliberation. And so we're gonna try this, and it's a time saver that other boards have used. And the way it normally works is if there are no requests by any council member to separate out one of the agenda items, then we will vote on these consent agenda items as a whole. If there is a request by any council member to pull out an agenda item for further discussion, that council member would need to make a motion. We would seek a second and have a vote on that, and it would then be pulled out and placed later in the agenda. If there are no requests to pull out any one agenda item from the consent agenda, we will vote on those agenda items in full. So are there any requests by any of the council members to pull out any specific consent agenda item? There appearing to be none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, we've got a motion in second.
All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So those agenda items are approved, and we'll next move to our next agenda item. We have a special presentation from Nick Dido with Harbor Town Inc. Nick, come on forward, please.
Thank you. We've prepared a brief document for this evening, and if you have a hard copy of it, there's also this PowerPoint of it. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm Nick Dido. I'm president and CEO of Harbor Towns Inc. I have several friends with me and colleagues, and they talk about some different elements of our program and what's happening. And I'll ask them to introduce themselves when they get to their section. I have Peter Thompson, who's my colleague on the board of Harbor Towns. I have Captain Graham Teller, who's our senior captain. I have Ted Warren, our managing director of bookings and events, and also Chris Morris with Cheston, who is working with us on the infrastructure projects. I want to share with -- we'll obviously answer any questions any of you may have, and welcome any comments and suggestions from anyone as well. Thank you so much for letting us catch you up on where we are. We believe where we are is good news, good news. The primary purpose of the Harbor Towns initiative with the boats in particular was it is to bring people who are not here in the Almar Sound region to the Almar Sound region, to introduce them to the different five Harbor Towns, and to have them come here to be welcomed with the hospitality that the region has. And that's our proof of -- this is a proof of concept to see even with a limited amount of boats, whether we can do that, because the initial plan has always been that we would have perhaps five to seven passenger boats of different characteristics, and probably two dinner boats operating fully on the Almar Sound. But the proof of concept is, can the boats be used to bring visitors and tourists into the Almar Sound Harbor Towns? And you'll see in a few minutes that the answer to that is a resounding yes. Before we get to some data on the amount of cruises and tours that we've done and the guests who have come here to be part of those cruises and agenda, I want to thank you. The town of Edington has been so welcoming to us, your staff, Cory in particular. I think Cory and I are on each other's speed dial, and I appreciate it because I know when he calls me, he needs an answer, and I call him, I need an answer. And the citizens of Edington as well have welcomed us, and we really appreciate that. In particular, we appreciate your generous decision to let us use the space in the other side of this building for our offices, and we use that now. That's our central location for all of our planning and coordination for the infrastructure projects that are being planned and will soon be underway for Edington, Hertford, Elizabeth City, Plymouth, and Columbia, for all of those projects. And would you advance it once, please? Thank you. It's our central location for the infrastructure project work for all of the Harbor Towns, and it also is where we do the daily planning and coordination for the booking and events with our boats. And so we really appreciate that. We are putting it to good use. We use that daily, and we're very grateful to you for that. I now want to call on Ted Warren, who's our managing director of booking and events for all of our boats. Now I'll ask Ted to introduce himself and make some comments about the guests that we've been able to serve.
Thanks, Nick, and thank you all for having us. And I get to talk about something that I'm very passionate about, which is the Almar Sound. We have done more already at this point of the season than was done all last season. With what we did yesterday, we've had 1,500 people on that boat, and that's phenomenal. And we, not only, we support local, we have local employees from all around, but one of the large things we do, if I can come up with this next.
Get the next one.
Where am I at? Let me shoot that over to you.
Okay.
There we go. You can see the percentage of out-of-town folks, and that's what we're really going for. I was a small business owner for 30 years, and we have to support small businesses, and we're doing that whenever we go out to Kellogg's, and we go out and buy hardware, and we go to the local caterers. And so we're supporting folks that day, that way. And what we're doing also, we're bringing in all of those folks from outside the area. So yesterday, we were in Elizabeth City, we were sold out at 80 passengers, and 90% -- that one's not up there, for the one yesterday, 90% of the passengers were from outside of the area.
Can I ask you, is that like, how do they advertise that? Is that like a group going from somewhere else, or they say, we'll come get on at 1:00 and we'll go to lunch?
Well, you know, we're all over social media, but we go by the phone number whenever they book.
No, no, no. I mean, if somebody, is it a group that's put together, like if, you know, is it a group of people that's put together in advance, or is it a group of people that like call in to the office?
They call in, and we market them on the phone all the time. A lot, several of these are local nonprofits that book the boat. Susan Engel's the one that's, I think you mentioned up there, for the Fig Festival. We have, you know, we brought on all the same halls. So we bring in large numbers like that. And I see, we've got the Boys and Girls Club in a couple of weeks of Almar. Last weekend, we did the Senior Center and One Day, and then the next day, we had a wedding on Sunday, 120 folks from outside the area that normally wouldn't know Edington until they came here for that wedding venue. So that part's exciting. We also want to thank the citizens of Edington for supporting us and give them a ride too. So it's something that they can just book a ticket, a sunset cruise, or sunny brunch, but they can also just walk up to the boat. And we started this year a season pass where citizens from Edin -- anyone can do it, but a person from Edington can have that season pass. And when the boat is in Elizabeth City, they just walk on the boat. And that way, the Edington citizen becomes a tourist, and they go to Elizabeth City in the same way with folks in Plymouth or Elizabeth City. They buy that season pass, and they get the Friday and the Saturday night cruise, and they just walk here, and they would support the restaurants in the area, and then they come on to the boat.
Do your guests have the opportunity to make a comment about their trip, either negative or positive? What are some of the positives, and what are some of the negatives?
The, I'm trying to think of a negative. Our captain and myself, we're always standing there, and especially the seniors. We got phenomenal for the trip that we went on Tuesday, response from that. And it's social media, you can go on that media and social, Facebook, and see what, how people were responding. We've had to, you know, we've gone with a, we went with a third-party ticket agent. So it's been a little curve, a little educational curve, but it's less and less every week. But the.
What I'm hearing, overwhelming positive comments.
Overwhelming. And if there's anything a complaint is, is that we're not here all the time, or we're not in Elizabeth City all the time. They really want us, every town wants us. So, you know, that would be the only negative. Certainly a positive is, some of the folks that you would see on the boat, our employees, are all faces that y'all see every day. And so we support certainly the local Pepsi and coastal beverages, we support the locals.
We are still considered the host port, correct?
We, every host, every port is a host. We're all five, but we're here more, and we are beginning a new partnership, hopefully, with the Barker House, because we want to support them, they want to support us, so we're gonna start doing a lot more things with them. So that's, that's gonna be great. Something coming up, certainly, they want to work with us for the Candlelight Tour, so we're gonna be down there for whatever they need us to do. And I would say, you know, thank you all again for supporting us, and buy that season pass.
Next slide, please. I'll ask, as Ted said, we support local businesses every time we, any time that is possible. We have in the decks just some examples of local businesses that we do support. I'll now call on our senior captain, Captain Graham Teller.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council, for all of you. Back. There you go. All right, so I've got a pretty easy job. I'm supposed to talk about the money that I'm trying not to spend, but it's a boat, so we spend a lot of money. Give you a little bit about my background. I'm a chief bosom mate, retired, U.S. Coast Guard. Just left the federal law enforcement training center down in Charleston, South Carolina. Broad teaching seaport security, anti-terrorism, skate control, patrol tactics, maritime tattoo operator training program. So I'm an instructor, a trainer, and evaluator. And often, we talk to our people, and we say, what comes first, train, maintain, or operate? And I ask you to put that in order, and you can't do that, it's difficult. One doesn't exist without the other. So my job is to try to make sure that this boat that we have runs down the river and do so safely. So as an operator, as a captain, I am responsible for passengers and crew first and foremost, obviously, safe operation and navigation of the boat. So I've got a lot of burden that when I'm moving down the river, especially our guests, our passengers, we're doing so safely. And that's, it's not here, it's everywhere. So, so I'm leaving, or I left the unit where I had a $2.5 million budget, that was just for maintenance. We have obviously a little bit smaller of a budget. There it is. And I did that every year. I know, and I know I'm breaking hard, but I am trying to save money. So when it comes to spending our money, I go through Paxton, which is a maritime sort of discounted big warehouse, if you will, out of Norfolk, Virginia. And some of the places, some of the people that we're using, we look at this, so back services, that's obviously where we get our sewage pumped out. Welding, we are a steel-hulled vessel, so we do need welding. It is a boat that will always need some type of maintenance on it. Obviously, we've got our sign companies, we are fire systems, we have to make sure that we're constantly keeping up with all of our gear to make sure that we're in compliance with what Coast Guard certificate of inspection requires us to do. So these are some of the folks that we're using. When we go to different towns, just like Nick and Ted said, we are using other folks and supporting their local places as well.
Thank you, Captain. As you may remember, we, thanks to the support and the good work and the championing by Representative Ed Goodwin, we initially received a grant from the state legislature to purchase and operate a small number of boats as a proof, again, as a proof of concept. And then, then we also received a second grant that is dedicated to improving the assets and the features in the, in the infrastructure of the waterfronts of the five Harbor Towns. And I'll now turn this over to my colleague, Peter Thompson, and to Chris Morris to talk about where we are with the infrastructure of work that we're doing.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council people. In your package, you have a couple of laundry lists of what we're doing in the Almar. So rather than go through all of that, I'd like to specify the Edington itself. I would like to make one small comment. The college, as a host of Harbor Towns, it is our own port, which is slightly different, but in fact, you are both a host and a home. In the Edington section, if you might, go one more. We have had several delays by engineering. Quite honestly, most of the snags and delays that we have in this area, and some of them are supplies, come from engineering and permitting. And they really slow things down. We're now in a position that shortly will be able to sit with you and prioritize these products. We know the prices now, we know what the engineering involved. We've been doing that for over a year now, with actually great support from Cory and his people. So the first thing that we have in the prime, one of the prime areas, is the underwater section of the breakwater, and also the wave attenuator part of it. And rather than me talking about something I know very little about, I'd like to bring Chris Morris, who's been spending his time with house engineering and moth construction, and give you an overview of what they found and what can be done. Chris?
Thank you, Peter, good evening, council. Chris Morris with Echo Cheston Construction. I want to speak with you briefly about downtown breakwater. You know, there are a few structural issues there. Several of the concrete pilings that support the boardwalk are damaged through wave action, we believe. Around a dozen piles are cracked, I won't say under water, most of them that we've got evidence of are above water, but slightly below the walkway. But they are cracked fairly significantly. In conjunction with house engineering and moth contract, we've explored a couple of options as a repair. We looked at possibly system pilings beside the damaged ones, but that became a little impractical to perform and very costly. So what we've, what we've landed on, I'll just give a very brief overview, not give it too far into it, but there is a fiber form jacket that you can apply to these damaged pilings that will encapsulate the damaged part of it. It's really an interlocking system, almost like a tummy groove that goes around the piling. It's got an injection port inside of it where you can pump marine grade high-strength epoxy into the encapsulation, maybe infill the cracks and support the piles. Still somewhat of a costly thing, but we found it'd be much more economical, a much more economical solution, and we think that's the direction we can go.
Can I ask you, Cory? You mentioned talking about like the walkway out there, we got to build out a bridge.
Yes.
I thought we just did it.
Cory, Mr. Cory can speak better than myself, but it's over 20 years old, you understand? Probably between 20 and 30.
I've been on here so long.
It's a long play yesterday, but it's probably closer to maybe 25 to 30, I guess. And you can imagine all that wave action over time. We take it's Wisconsin's failures. But we do have a system that we think we're going to move forward with. I won't get into the cost of it, but I do feel like it's an item that Harbor Towns can help you with, which would be great. Now, the other issue down here is an actual wave attenuation structure. It's not currently in place. If you're familiar with the breakwater out here, there's several openings along the way. It kind of acts as a wave attenuation, but they're kind of disrepaired, too. I think maybe once upon a time, vertical wooden slats were incorporated over these openings. They don't really do the job, so to speak. What we talked about doing is an actual wave attenuation system, which would incorporate steel sheet piles along the boardwalk, in front of the boardwalk, close to the full length of the boardwalk, actually around 600 feet, would do the job. But, again, I won't speak very long terms, but that's very, very expensive. We can talk about cost, if you like, we do have pricing on that, but it is, it's expensive. That would be with a, probably with a 50-foot steel sheet pile with a metal cap, with a concrete cap on it, that'd be even more expensive. So you've got pricing with a metal cap. But that's really what I feel like you would need here to protect the boardwalk long-term.
When you fix those pilings, I mean, is there some, like, you put epoxy and stuff in there, which sounds like a good idea, but is it some way that doesn't spill out and it be a common little problem? Is that something we need to?
The, the system, again, is like a fiber jacket that goes around it, and it should contain. I mean, that's its purpose. Now, if something spills out, I don't know. We need to address that.
So when we're talking about price, I'm assuming that, that cost will be coming from the allotment in each town, is that correct?
Fixing piles, I feel like, boy, I don't want to speak for Harbor Towns, but I feel like it could be.
So that would be part of the waterfront improvement?
Improvement project, yes, so it would be part of infrastructure improvement.
And what cost, Cory, what can we expect?
Direct cost, I mean, that's without contractor revenue, et cetera. I think the direct cost is somewhere between $1,000 and $3,000.
Now, we'll have the opportunity to get together with you if we have individual questions about cost and prioritization of all these things that we hear.
Yes, that's correct. And the uniqueness of our waterfront with the amount of infrastructure that is already in place, particularly with us being on a sound, not a riverfront, is where some of these increases cost to show. These plans have taken quite a large number of team members to get to this point of actually pricing, particularly for us versus something more similar to what we've done like on the cannon ship, or something that's a fairly easy repair for non-turbulent marina set. So these costs are still estimates, and the repairs and what we go through here, there really have to be some type of quality system to put in place, which is one of the things that I know that we've been working on. It's the easiest, it's most similar for us, it's been kind of around the fuel system. That's been a much simpler item to design and to get cost for versus repairing a 25-year-old plus breakwater. So we still have a lot of work to do, even with these contractors on price. I think y'all just got pricing, I believe, last week.
Yes, as you said earlier, preliminary pricing. But what I'm hearing. And we happen to have the opportunity, administrative staff yourself, to go through line by line to look at things.
That's right. We still do that.
So this is just a presentation, agenda item tonight, and not an action item?
Yes.
What are the next steps, and how far would that be over those next steps?
Knowing that most of this work is taking the longest year, now would be time for us to sit down and review all of the costs and what the engineering plans are to make these corrections, to try to prioritize those, and figure out what will we bring back to camp to report to the appropriate committee for approval, whether that's TRC or EPC, or where that kind of falls into play for the application.
And how long do you think it'll take for you to go through your process before you get in possession to meet with those of us individually who want to have a question?
I think it'll be fairly quick, within the next week or so. I'd say the first day is the plan, a meeting with the.
I have a question. First to you. Did, Cory?
Chris Morris.
Got it. Is a check in the mail?
The money's in the bank.
It's in the bank, okay. So we have a question.
It's better than checks.
Okay, this one, check.
And if I could just remind council that this was a directed grant from the state legislature to Harbor Towns for a purpose of improving the waterfront infrastructure of each of the five towns. So each of the five towns, Edington, for example, will be able to spend close to $2 million on projects, but that may not, may or may not go very far down the list. But that's why, that's why we need initial cost estimates, so we have better data for the town to make decisions about priorities. I'd also like to remind you that the grant, the grant is what's called a directed grant, and roughly one year from now, any money that has not been spent or has not been encumbered reverts to the state. So there is a sense of urgency on our part and on your part to move forward with identifying the projects that would be most beneficial to Edington and Edington Waterfront, and so we can, again, the purging process in order to get to the, get to the construction bid process. And I'd also like to say that although we are a private nonprofit, that is, Harbor Towns Inc. is a private nonprofit, we are pursuing these projects as if we were a municipality. That is, we're doing open bidding, inviting contractors from around the region to be engaged in these projects, again, with our philosophy of always trying to go local if we possibly can. So I end with this sense of urgency that I think we all understand.
Nick, I've got a question. Switching gears from infrastructure to operations, can you give us a status report, the general public's status report, the High Street Fairies?
They have been, as everyone knows, they have been a struggle. This time last year, we were constantly having to cancel scheduled trips and events because of mechanical and mechanical problems and other problems with the boats. Now, Moses is.
Now, Moses is in good shape and is seems to be operating well and appropriately. And Penelope has been a longer slog, but we think that maybe we have identified and corrected the problems with her. And I believe, Peter, I believe the Coast Guard is coming to inspect August fifth. So, we'll see if we've resolved all the issues with her. I want to, again, because of your good question, Mr. Mayor, I want to, again, remind you and the public that this funding enabled us to do a proof of concept. We don't have a fleet of five to seven passenger boats and two dinner boats yet. But what we are able to show regardless of the boat is that we're able to provide joyful event for local residents and, more importantly, to bring people to the Harbor Towns from outside the Albemarle Sound Bridge.
So, as of right now? As of right now, so one boat is operating right now in the water, is that correct?
There's, would you go to the first page slide there, please? At the bottom left-hand corner, you can call one eight eight, one eight four four IBXBOAT or email info@harbertowns.org to book any of the boats. And yet, right now, Albemarle Queen is very functional and Moses Randy is operating well as well. We'll see, we'll see what the future might hold for Penelope.
Well, I think we're all really excited about this. I mean, I think that it's a great thing. I think if we can get this hotel in and if it gets going, it'll be just a great karma between the, you know, stay here, then walk down to the boat. I'm just curious, are these bathrooms, is that what they are? What, what are these two things?
If I ever get past him, I'll.
May I sit down? Just a minute.
It's your presentation, Nick. You're good.
Before we get to the bathrooms, I'd like to talk about a couple of other things that we're doing. The fuel storage outlet will open the marina and for emergency from the town. This has been, the contract's been out, it's gone, it's on its way. We're waiting for the tanks to arrive to put them in, so that's, that's a done deal as far as we're concerned. This is what the suppliers do, the specialized supplier of this sort of equipment. We also have costs on a small pavilion for the breakwater without adding to the breakwater, so it would be fairly small and on the point there as a welcoming sign for when you come in to Edington. The showers, when we talked about the showers before in council, we talked about a new spot for the showers and a new design for them, which included an eagle's nest, if you like, on top for the, for the marina managers, so they can oversee the entire green. What we did was, we got worried, we got a little pre-value engineering on it, and we said, we may not be able to afford all the cost of a new building. Given a new building, especially in a zone that meets camera regulations and has to have new wood power, new sewer and everything else, might be more expensive than the grant could afford. So, at the same time, what we did was, and we're not against doing that, we just worried that we wouldn't have the money to do it. So, what we did on our own was, we took a look at the cost of replacing the present washrooms with a washroom with a second story on top, so that the harbor master can look down on the boats. And we have worked with AR Chesson to make a preliminary design for this, so that we can get pricing on it, so that when we get to a meeting of priorities, we know what each will cost. Chris, could you do a little, just Bobby phone for the motions?
So, the initial design that was set for downtown, that's been scratched, I'm assuming?
No, it hasn't been scratched at all. We know about what the cost is, we don't know whether, in your priorities, you can afford it.
Okay.
Are you looking at these structures at all five locations?
We're looking at different kinds of this sort of thing.
I mean, would Plymouth have the same structure?
Yeah, we're not, we're not doing it in Hartford. But it, no, it won't be the same structure in Plymouth at all. In Plymouth, we are putting washrooms in the old fire hall downstairs. In Columbia, we're building a separate, different kind of washroom in a different place. Elizabeth City is actually separated into two parts. The one in the waterfront park is finished, we're about to start the other one, which is in Mariner's Wharf. So, are we putting washrooms into towns? Yes. Are they the same? No. Chris?
If it's the design that you see before you hear, I mean, it's a brick structure, it's going to sit in the same footprint as the restrooms exist today, same dimensions. One room would include a staircase to get to the second floor.
Is this a new building or is it, it just tear that one down?
Tear this one down and put this one right.
So, that's amazing. So, whatever money you're talking about is money we could put into anything.
Yes, 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 yes. And the design that you see here, certainly no way to say this stuff's good.
That's good.
So, going back to my original question, the original plan has been scratched, because this structure has been torn down and the apartment statement is supposedly like a little driveway to go through and in the bathroom, it's supposed to be moved over here, is that correct?
And so, what you see here, it's really a wondering of the really square foot needs. The restrooms, what building to be, and back to the original design, wondering the existing place. This gives you an idea of what we need facilities wise for the dock master's office, the maritime center for visitors, as well as the restroom facilities. And so.
But we can still stick with our plan.
Once we prioritize everything and see what everything's.
Well, and I mean, I think we want to make this work. So, I mean, we may come up with some changes, but we want to make this work. I mean, we're, you know, we're on board with it.
Yeah, it is.
And in terms of cost, and this may be a question to the other people, and someone else can answer it better. But in terms of the cost, Edington faces unique challenges compared to the other communities, because we have more exposure to the wind and to the wave action here, just how we're located. I see the captain saying yes. And we need to make sure that that breakwater is repaired and repaired right to help guard against that wave action and things of that nature. So, we've got some challenges that the other towns, which are more protected, don't have, so.
If you remember, the initial grant funding was centered around some of the infrastructure. This presentation is to show you the various options that are there, that if the dollars amount could afford these potential things tied to the original plan and have. Now, if pricing shifts for the breakwater or the wave attenuator or the fuel system or the restrooms facility and showers facility, like those start to consume more of those dollars, then we have to be creative on how to utilize the funding. I wouldn't say that the original design is scrap, because we do have pricing for this unit in place, but we also receive pricing for what it would be for the new structure and the original design here, so this.
So, what does this cost? What is that?
Well, I put a budget together with everything else, so normally have that broke out to itself for the breakwater broke out to itself. I feel comfortable that the breakwater repairs, as described here, plus the construction of that building, generally speaking, would fall within the river.
Would fall within, yeah.
As a waterfront advisory, please review this.
I would visit the first.
We would provide an update on what infrastructure projects we've been working on, what events have been taking place this season, and really kind of an update, because we've had the biggest to-do list for improvements. This isn't simple walking along a river's edge on the road.
And it will be involved in our discussion, yes.
And you can pull out a figure that this would cost, that we have kind of washed it, so we can say, here's what we got. Maybe we need to change it a little bit.
Adjustments.
Yeah, adjustments.
So, Corey, would you let us know as soon as you're in a position to meet with us? Because I've obviously got a lot of interest among the council. And then, as Nick pointed out, time goes to come under essence quite soon, because we're not already there. And so, I know that a lot of us would like to get together with him, we'd have it closer, so we can prioritize them. Nick, do y'all have anything else that you need to say, or does the council have any more questions?
I thought I said, thank you. We're excited about it, we really are. Thank you, Chris.
Well, as many of the people in this room know, this was, has been a dream, a vision from Phil McMillan and Bunny Sanders and Peter for close to thirty years. And it's wonderful that we're able to now actually begin.
And that can do it too, for all history.
Indeed, indeed, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Our next agenda item is a special presentation from our own David Myers, who will give us an update on paving and sidewalk projects. David?
Sir, thank you, Mayor. Evening, Council. And I've come here to talk to y'all about the street paving. You know, it's been a huge, huge hot topic, along with sidewalks, and we're going to try to knock it all out of mind. Edington is a little bit different than a lot of towns. You know, we maintain our roads, but we also have DOT. So, for folks that don't know, Virginia Road, West Queen Street, East Church, Gramble, from the stoplights to Virginia Road, Coke Avenue, MLK, West Albemarle, Paradise, and Peanut Drive are all DOT roads. So, you know, any issues, it's on DOT, everything else we maintain.
Can you shout that out and say that, repeat it five more times?
That's right. This here is an overview of a map that we paved. Everything in green, we have paved. I think we have paved fifty-two roads, we have fifty-five left. Everything in black, we haven't done anything with. The red, we have some sewer work coming up, so there will be some paving done. The section on Gramble, I never updated the map, so that one section, you know, Mr. Virginia did find the money, so we did pave that section on Gramble.
Excuse me, is that still work around Mars Circle?
It will be, I'll talk about it here in just one second. So, y'all heard me and Corey talk about a paving assessment. You know, paving assessment was done back in two thousand seventeen-ish, I think. They prioritized roads category one through five, one being worse, five being, you know, pretty decent shape. You can't really see here, but there's supposed to be some orange. But anyway, we did a phase one, phase two, and a phase three. You can see all the prioritized, the ones we've done. We are pleased to say there are no ones left, we did get all those paved. Here's phase two, prioritized of what we've done. And you'll probably see, like, why did you do threes over twos? And some of them did, you know, for utility patching, utility maintenance that we've done with water and sewer lines. Here's some phase four and some phase five that we've done. So, like, Irondale Drive was prioritized five, but we did the whole water line, so we went on and paved it. There was some, so here, so since two thousand seventeen, the town has spent four point two million dollars on paving roads. So, you're looking, we did half the roads, so if we wanted to pave everything, you're looking at another four and a half million dollars. If we did it all at one time? If we did it all at one time, yeah. So, there are some twos left on the map. East Freemasons was held off due to the high school rehab. South Broad Street, you know, there's a whole lot of work that needs to be done, but we have to work with the restaurants, you know, there's a lot of, you can't just come in and pave South Broad Street. It's not that easy. There's some, you know, some threes that are left on the map, fours and fives. So, East Freemasons Street, if we wanted to pave it, it would cost us fifty-two thousand dollars. So, I kind of, just remember these numbers while I show you what we budgeted this year. So, it's fifty-two thousand dollars for East Freemason. This is what, you know, the picture on the right is Alligator Cracking, Pop Hole. The road's not in horrible shape, the way I've seen, but it is bumpy. Mars Circle, so Mars Circle is due to have complete sewer repair. We're hoping to have a pre-con meeting next month in August. There's already, the contract has been set, the contractor's been set. We're just waiting on the dotted eyes across our teeth. So, we will have to pave Mars Circle afterward, and we're looking at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to pave it.
When is that infrastructure work, when we try to get that completed?
So, the pre-con meeting is August, I would think within a year, less than a year, six months. It depends on the contractor, when he can get us in. So, here's some pictures of Mars Circle, which, you know, there's some bad areas. Would love to put curb and gutter, but curb and gutter, you're looking at another two hundred thousand dollars, so. One of mine that I want to see paved is South Open Street. There is some sewer repair, there's old sewer line that needs to be taken out. It wasn't properly abandoned, that's why you ride down and you get that washboard effect. So, we do need to do something there, and I didn't get a quote on that road. But on that contract from Mars Circle, it does Johnson, Cabarrus, Mars Circle, First Bond, it's all one big project. So, you can see, if we do that sewer repair, what it's going to cost to pave those roads. And I think if we add those five numbers up, we're at about two hundred eighty thousand dollars. So, it's a lot of money. Do I have any questions, Scott? Councilman Bond, we're talking about sidewalks. If we did over for roads, not as simple as just putting sidewalk in and walking away. I reached out to three different vendors to do sidewalks on over for roads. We're looking at two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. That's sidewalks, storm drain boxes, storm drains, getting rid of the ditches. If we did Johnson Street, we're looking at about a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. So, it's pretty pricey. So, those numbers, this is what I have to work with this year. For my street department, I have just over eighty-four thousand dollars. In my pile bill, I have a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, for a total of two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. But, take in consideration, you know, I still have to do utility repairs. We do repair sidewalks for trip hazards. So, yes, two hundred and fifty-one thousand there, which is probably going to be around two hundred and twenty, two hundred thousand for repairs for sidewalks installed. So, two hundred thousand is a lot, but it only goes small, small ways. I've also got a quote on the two parking areas here and just the back loop, I think that was about twenty thousand. That's something that I would like to see done, just right downtown.
Can any of these sidewalk projects be done in phases, or is that an official?
Yeah, it can be done in phases, absolutely. You know, just whatever we want to do.
David, with the downtown area, you know more about this than I do. But that should be sealed instead of paved?
It can, so.
Is that much cheaper?
Yep, and I got some numbers here, and I was going to go over that as well. So, there's a couple of questions that come out about Paradise Road. I reached out to DOT, they are going to let the contract out for all of twenty-five. And I think Corey will let y'all know, you know, it could take up to two years to be paved.
Are they still doing like the twelve to twenty-four month contracts, twelve to eighteen?
I think so, I think so. I reached out to them about Gramble Street, and they depend on funding, if it is available. There was also, I got twenty-three roads, and I'm not, I'm not going to go over all of them, but there was twenty-three roads in town that I just quoted, just went through, they had no sidewalks. To do twenty-three roads for residential areas, we're looking at two point one million dollars for sidewalk install. That's just sidewalk, that's not storm drain. So sidewalks are great, they are, but they are very, very expensive. So we do recommend doing a new paving assessment. That'll get engineers in here to go over all the roads that we've done, to see what we need to do. What I think is a great idea is we seal coat these roads. They come in with a tar asphalt mix, they spray the whole road, and I can do that for like thirty cent square foot. That saves the road we've already paved. You know, that'll seal the cracks, it'll seal the water from going on our new flood, and it'll prolong that road. So if we do that, we won't be able to do any paving of any roads this year. So that option is still something me and town manager need to talk about, see where we need to go, and what's best for Eaton.
How long will that extend the lifespan of the road?
I would say you'd probably get another ten to fifteen years out of them.
Or top of the hill, or?
Yeah. And if you ride down like Child of Lane, you'll see them all cracked up, and it's just the way it is. I mean, but we seal coat it, we'll save it. In all the roads, even if you ride down Gramble, the one that they just paved is already cracking. You know, financially, the right thing to do is to take the road completely up, but then you're looking at crazy amount of money. It's just, you can do a lot more paving if you just, you know.
David, can you and Cory get together and give us some more information on that process?
Yeah, so you do have an option, you know, council can talk about it, about taking a loan or a bond out. You know, for that two million dollars to install sidewalks or paving. So that is something y'all can explore, but you know, there's a debt service that comes with that. We did do Paxton Lane, that sidewalk, I don't know if you've seen it. But there has some damage that has been done to it already.
Yeah.
So be mindful. And if there's not a sidewalk there, there's probably a reason why there's not a sidewalk there. And if we do Johnson Street, you know, do you want sidewalk, or would you rather have the trees? Because we'd have to take all the cracked marbles out. There's some oak trees that are probably a hundred fifty years old that would have to come out. So just be mindful when we decide, hey, I want to install sidewalk, it's not just as simple as just putting it down. Do y'all have any questions? I think that was it that I had. I think the town's done a great job paving, you know, four point two million dollars is a lot of money to spend in less than ten years.
Did you do twenty-two streets, two years?
I believe so, yeah. So we're at fifty-two streets, and there's fifty-five left.
What causes the washboard effect? I've seen it now behind the hospital on Hick Street.
Just the utilities underneath, storm drains, old galvanized pipe and holes.
You just pay that, you know, to?
The, the one on Open is bad, and the one here on Gramble. They have, you know, the one on Gramble has a sewer issue we need to repair. So we'll be glad to fix it, I just, I need funds.
Cory, can you and David and Virginia get together and the finance piece to figure out what are the costs and what that would look like as far as that services? I think paving or we service some of these streets is a priority. Especially over sidewalks right now, if it's going to be, you know, be that bad. Or maybe a combination of both sidewalks and paving.
And what we have to do is, like, some of the paving that's been done on First, Second, Third, if you remember, we've paved a section, paved a section of Open, we've also paved a section of North Harlem. And some of those initial entrances have been going to at least stock the process, get some turnaround intersections that experience are kind of the most rare material from stocking, stuff trailers dragging and living up asphalt. But we have been mindful about where sewer replacements are needed, where real line replacements are needed. So that's a big job, of course, for us to try to utilize water and sewer to at least cover the utility patching needs to kind of go forward in what we have from the general point of view. So we do try to strategically pick where we get the most bang for our buck and get the most length for the longest number of roads completed.
We try to use numerous vendors to try to get the best product, try to pinch every penny we can. That's why there was four different vendors. Try to save every dime we can, yes, sir.
David, is the state going to come back and pave this section?
The railroad?
Yeah.
They are still trying to get the agreement with the railroad company.
It's still ahead of it?
For some, they had told me they had got it, and somehow there was a wrench thing in it, and they have not yet got approval for an encroachment agreement from the railroad company.
Tough to deal with though.
And they still have to come back on Second Street and Third, it's holding water. So they'll still come back, mill those areas out and correct that issue as well. But they've still got some little bit more work to do.
You're back in the spring of the year?
Probably.
Thank you, David, for everything you did.
Thank y'all, really appreciate it, thank y'all.
Cory, real quick, before we move on, follow up with Mr. Costin, Costin's latest, most recent comment that he just had a few minutes ago. Do you, off the top of your head, do we have any major debt services coming up over the next twelve, eighteen months?
I have to look, maybe a deal or one is that are less than two years that will be following along.
Thanks again, David. Best agenda item is board and commission appointments. We have one vacancy on our Historic Preservation Commission, and we have two applicants. I believe both of those applicants are here today, and I would like to invite them forward and talk to us about your interest in this position, and also give us what you think your qualifications are, and we'll do that in alphabetical order. So the first candidate is Hal Murray, Hal, if you'll come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. An important qualification for an appointment to the EPC, the Eaton Preservation Commission, is residency. I'm a resident of Eaton, I live here, I'm in the house in historic district. I vote here, I support the local businesses, and I'm on the vice of the board of the senior center, and a member of the board of the Eaton's Yonk Club. I am involved in the community. I've been going to the Eaton Preservation Commission meetings longer than anybody that's presently on the board except Lisa Baker. When I first started going to those meetings, Bill Schultz was the chair, and Anne Marie was the town manager. After that, Lisa Baker became the chair, and now Paula Hicks is. My experience in watching the proceedings and how they're done, over time, has helped me understand the proceedings as well as the standards that one applies. Perhaps you remember, Mr. Mayor, when you came before the EPC yourself to have windows put in at the back of your home? That's been a long time ago, I was there at that meeting. We, and when I say we, I mean personally, we came before the EPC, the Preservation Commission, in two thousand twenty-two to add a shed, alter a roof line, and build a garage. A good framer and myself built those things, we did it ourselves, in the hand of the nails. And in addition to that, we came before the EPC, we got the necessary building permits. We went through the inspections and final inspections, and then the buildings go. So I've gone through the process from start to finish, and I think that's an important qualification so that you actually understand what somebody's going to be going to when they come before the Eaton Preservation Commission. Much of what comes before the Preservation Commission is a balance of understanding what's in the standards versus what is being proposed, and trying to see that the proposal fits within those standards. My background as a scientist is, all supports that, because they're both fact-driven. You're given a set of facts in one, data-driven, fact-driven, and you look at the two and you compare them, you see how they mesh, and see if there's an overlap, see if there is not. And in conclusion, at the last Eaton Preservation Commission meeting, I acted as an advocate for an individual who came before the commission one time and wasn't able to ever come back. There were some issues of some sort, and this individual wasn't able to make the presentation to the commission and answer questions. And through their approval and Duane's making the necessary connections, I was able to understand what this individual wanted and made the presentation for the EPC. And it was really a service for them, they got it off their pocket, they didn't have to keep putting this thing on as continuing business, as well as helping a property on the within Eaton. So that's what I would bring before you, and would ask for your support. Have any questions, then, so that I can answer, be happy to. Anyone have any questions, Mr. Murray? Okay, thank you, Hal.
Yes, sir. You too. And Brian Towers is here, Brian, come forward.
Well, good evening, Mayor, and honorable members of our town council. First of all, I want to thank the board for this opportunity to consider, be considered for the Eaton Historic Preservation Commission. Before telling you about my background, I think it's important to take a minute to explain my love affair with history. I was born and raised and married rich with colonial history. From an early age, my siblings and I were nurtured to appreciate the substance of our ancestors who landed on this continent when I lived in sixteen sixty-three. To roam the forts and valuable monuments that identify the many battles of the French and Indian, or Seven Year War, depending on which side of the Atlantic you happen to be on, that took place just over the hill from where I lived, through the grass, the importance of the Saratoga National Battlefield, the turning point of the American Revolution just down the road, and where my parents are interred today at the National Cemetery. It is a passion that has only grown stronger over the last decade, living in this community. A community that chooses to embrace and preserve its role in telling the story of who we are and where we came from, and it is a great story. So what do my life experiences bring to the table? My education in electrics and electrical trades, in which I spent thirty-plus years designing, building, and maintaining broadband communication networks. The foundation of the internet access today, we just didn't know it at the time. This entailed working with state regulators, local government agencies to construct central offices, as well as receive and distribution facilities in numerous communities in a number of northeastern states. Often finding that what we designed on paper and what was practical in the field being two different things. Simultaneously, I operated a Federal Energy Regulatory Commission licensed hydroelectric power facility and dam that impounded a two hundred and seventy-five acre watershed. From both a technical as well as structural aspect, this is perhaps the most daunting of my career endeavors. As one can imagine, impounding water entails taking responsibility for the lives and treasure of those both upstream and down. And honestly, the greatest challenge I found was being able to communicate with FERC engineers who spoke broken Chinese and Russian, of which neither language I speak. Somewhere along the line, I became disenchanted with the direction my town was going. And having been raised in a family that believed in being part of the solution, not the problem, I ran for the position of what you call a town manager. And was elected and re-elected several times for more than two decades, serving before stepping down on my own court. That position came with a seat on the county board of supervisors as well. Serving as both a deputy county chair and chair of the public work committee that oversaw the construction, maintenance of some ninety-five miles of paved highway and sixty-two lane bridges. As town manager, I was the central player in numerous projects beyond the day-to-day operations of providing taxpayer services. From instigating the first state-approved dredging project of a pristine Adirondack lake, to redeveloping fuel storage facilities, promoting economic development, rebuilding drinking water systems, and every other unglamorous thing you can think of or can imagine. There is an old saying, that if you want something done, ask a busy person. And I guess that was never true, really, in my case. In addition to the Obama, I was asked to serve as chairman of the board to an eighty-bed nursing home and rehabilitation facility that was bleeding money and needed to begin in what turned out to be a five-year rebasing process to increase Medicaid reimbursement. The first successful rebasing effort in New York, I might add. For some eight years, I was chairman of the Adirondack Association of Towns, a compact of a hundred and twenty towns and villages from both sides of the political spectrum that lobbied the state legislature on behalf of their collective issues. I was an active member for twenty years and twice chairman of the inter-county legislature committee that focused on workforce development and lobbied state legislatures on economic concerns of twelve counties. And finally, before retiring here at Eaton, I was chairman of the County Industrial Development Agency, board for twenty years, where I worked with the Small Business Administration to create revolving loan funds, programs for startup, existing business expansion, and redevelopment projects. Since retiring is about slowing down, I spent my day, I now spend my days walking the grand dog downtown, building a handicapped ranch with the Baptist men, enjoying the beautiful architecture of our historic community, and giving back in smaller ways. I recently stepped down from the board of Friends and State Historic Sites as my term was ending this spring, where I served as treasurer for several years. Currently, I volunteer at the Chawan Eaton Food Pantry, collecting food from Food Line, volunteering with the Bookbag Buddies program, delivering food to our elementary and middle schools, and serve as chair of the deacons for Eaton Baptist Church. I come before you tonight, not because I have an agenda, or because I think I know how to do it better, but rather I believe in giving back to the place I now call home. And hopefully, if the board so desires, my background in a variety of both professional and public service can be of use to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Thank you. Will there be any questions?
I have a question. Is it safe to say you work as a town manager and you're also as a county commissioner?
Correct.
What was the size for the town, I see it wells in New York, what in size town is that?
Um, a couple thousand people.
And is that, is that part of Hamilton County?
It is. Beautiful part of the Adirondack. Three hundred and sixty-four days of winter and one day of porridge.
Thank you, Brian.
You're welcome.
We're not on the tour.
Before I call for a vote and discussion on these two gentlemen, Cory, we've got two candidates for one position. Do we have any other boards that have posted requests or applications and we didn't receive any, or anything else out there?
We do, Duane does have a list of other boards as well that we will be coming back for volunteers. This was an opportunity for our candidates to be here tonight, but we do have other positions as well, yes.
Are there some positions where there were no applicants that you know of, Duane?
Yes, sir, off the top of my head, we have any board adjustment alternate, no, just came back in. The planning board was going to be like, either one of the advocates can make it for one position, so there's one opening, we have two applicants for the planning board, so it'd be current and subsequent meetings. But as of right now, we have a county board of adjustment, or ETGA, and a town ultimate for board adjustment.
Do you have a town planning board?
We have one, but we have two advocates that couldn't be here tonight, so that'll be another hearing that I'll be here on a day.
Mayor, is it possible to table this and make it a place on the next agenda, if there's enough time to do it, or we have four council to kind of discuss it as well, versus making a decision tonight?
Well, the thought did occur to me that we've got two absent tonight, and I don't know which gentleman they would prefer for the appointment. It's important about, I think, fabric merits. Is it, it's, it's important enough, I, I think, that we merit some discussion as to whether we wanted to do that. You know, if we were voting on a very small budget amendment or something like that, I would say, well, let's, and we're all gonna be unanimous. But here, you know, it's not just a thumbs up or thumbs down over one question. You know, it would be somebody makes a motion in favor of one, um, and it would either be a second or not. So there is a concern that we only have four in the seat. Is that a concern to share? But I'm not a voting member unless there's a, a tie. Is that a concern? I think you said it was a concern. It's a concern here?
Yeah, well, let's, let's just...
Yeah.
So I'll make the motion that we table it for, um, the next agenda.
Okay, the second, I vote, we have a second, a second from Councilman Dixon. Okay, all in favor of tabling our decision on these two gentlemen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, guys. You both gave good presentations and good applications and, um, we'll take it under advisement to table it and hopefully have, uh, full complement of our Councilman Peter here, uh, next session, next meeting, excuse me. Okay, the next, uh, agenda item is a resolution directing the clerk to investigate a petition which has been received under GS one sixty-eight dash fifty-eight point one. Duane and Corey will, uh, report on this and answer any questions. But, uh, one sixty-eight dash fifty-eight point one is an annexation statute here in North Carolina and a property owner can request that their property be annexed and that is the first step in a three-step process. And we have received, uh, a request from a property owner to be annexed. And so the first thing we would need to do is hear from, um, Duane and then have a vote on whether we're gonna direct him to move forward steps two and three. Duane, if you're comfortable.
Yes, sir. This is a, it's an application for three sixteen, uh, ordered from Lou, that's out here. Can I ask you a question, Duane? Isn't that property already in the city limits? Uh, no, it is, uh, so if you're...
It's in the line, is that correct?
It's right on the line.
Yeah, I, I saw it, yeah.
And it took up a bunch of ground.
Right on the line. Yeah, I'll, it bumped the line.
Just took that property and goes to the next property and that's in city limits.
It bumps, it's a continuous property.
It is not.
And it already has public utilities that run right by there. Uh, there's gonna be no extension of public utilities at this point. Uh, this first step is just to, uh, have council, um, give the clerk the ability to investigate it to meet sure, make sure it meets all the special requirements. The next step would be to, uh, for council to approve, for it to go to a public hearing. Public hearing date would be set and then the last step would be the public hearing, uh, to either allow this, allow an annexation.
Is it right now, is that, is that right or not?
That's my knowledge. Yes, sir, that is right.
Are we planning to keep it up with or...
The, the plan, it was, it was, uh, bought by, uh, W P Tru Properties. Um, the plan is to keep it residential to add some more housing, residential housing stocks, intercompany housing stock to the town. Uh, and, um, basically defy that area, kind of.
I think we, uh, owe it to ourselves, particularly this involving council, to direct, um, Duane and others to investigate the sufficiency of the request to be annexed. And so that's just my thought on it. I would entertain a motion to make that direction to staff.
To move, yes.
Okay, we've got a motion and second. Um, all in favor of directing, uh, the clerk to review the site and review the application, complete its investigation and report back to Town Council, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Duane.
Yes, sir.
That ends our special meeting. Now we'll move to our committee meetings. Uh, the only committee meetings we have is administrative committee chaired by Councilman Miller and we have two agenda items. I'm gonna pass it along to the Council.
Thank you, Mayor. We have, like you said, we have two, uh, two agenda items. Uh, first one is, uh, town staff time allotment policy. As this policy is, drafted is in your packet. Uh, the town staff have drafted a town staff allotment, time allotment policy. Uh, the creation of this policy was recommended by, uh, Councilman Turner at our last meeting, an effort to curtail the enormous amount of town staff time utilized on individual citizens' special requests for information. This policy is designed to help administrative staff as well as department heads manage their time more efficiently when researching responses to citizen inquiries that have become prolonged or exaggerated. The attempted policy is to establish guidelines to prevent the excessive use of town resources on a single citizen request. This administrative committee have looked at this particular draft and we're all in favor of it. So this time, uh, I'd like to forward this draft on to the full council.
Okay, we'll do so. All right, um, planning and zoning policy update?
Second item is the planning and zoning policy update. Today, we do have, uh, Duane, Assistant Town Manager with us, to give us an update on three draft, uh, planning and zoning policies that will be submitted to the planning board to take action upon. And these three items pertain to, one, our three zoning district, two, short-term rental ordinance, and the third one is the vacant building ordinance. So, Duane, would you...
Absolutely, sir. So, one thing I want to say is, uh, like, like, uh, Councilman Miller stated, um, nothing's being presented or implemented tonight. This is a preliminary, uh, um, show to let the public know what the town's been working on, uh, over the last six months. It's a planning retreat. Uh, I've dealt into really three big, uh, new policies that could potentially change, uh, our zoning ordinances as well as our, our code of ordinances. Uh, one being the R three, uh, residential district, which is, um, the intent there is, uh, to have small lots for more affordability. Uh, we already have, uh, lots within town that do not meet our minimum, which is five thousand square feet. Uh, so what you have before you is a draft based on lots of research, uh, other places. Um, trying to think about multifamily as well as, uh, as far down as landscaping. So this is, this is draft ordinance that will be hopefully in the September meeting going, uh, uh, to planning board and to be looked at, um, either revised. There may be some changes made. Uh, that'll give, uh, and it may be where we have to split these up because they're such large items where it might be over the course of three months before, you know, we finally get a, a version that comes before council. But for me getting up here, uh, letting the public know that there will be two other chances for a public hearing. Right, public input is what we want, uh, whether or not, you know, the needs to be changed, done. Already had a meeting, um, this morning, uh, with the short-term rental ordinance. Uh, that was brought up by, uh, members of the public as well as, uh, some members of council. Some changes have already been proposed for that and I'm gonna have to do some research and look at other municipalities and see, um, whether or not, uh, before it even goes to the board. Uh, the last one was the vacant building ordinance. Um, we don't have a, a large, um, issue with that within town right now. Uh, but looking twenty years into the future, uh, might be something we could help prevent, uh, any large vacancies. Have some kind of proactive way of preventing some, uh, large vacant buildings in the future. So that's three of the, uh, the biggest, uh, uh, zoning policies that are, that are coming to the town in quite some time. So I just wanted to let the public and council know that that's what we'll be working on over the next several months to, uh, get it tidied up and hopefully have your final version by the end of the year.
Do you think this will be introduced to the planning board individually or altogether? It, it's nice to take one thing and let it digest it.
I, I think so, uh, 'cause we, we throw all three of these in the planning board meeting, we'll have three or four hours talking about it. So we probably will take it one at a time. Um, I think...
I think we would prefer probably doing one at a time. Also, I know there's a lot of interest in the short-term rental, um, issue and I think we would probably, if you present it to us at bite-sized pieces.
I would, I would like to, if it's okay with council, go with the R three zoning first. Um, just from a development standpoint, knowing we've seen a lot of development around right now. Uh, and, um, I can go ahead and introduce that, hopefully, as long as all the members can be there at planning board session in, uh, September, so.
Does that sound good with everyone?
So for the short-term, um, rental ordinance, we have something in place right now, right?
Does, we, we have nothing in place. Uh, it was, uh, presented, I want to say in twenty nineteen, uh, twenty eighteen, somewhere around that timeframe. Uh, they're waiting on guidance from the state. To my knowledge, the state has never passed any sort of guidance. It's only been a case of all the various municipalities have been sued. So my goal is to not have the town be sued. So once we, uh, we go forward this, I will be showing it to the town, uh, town attorney to let him review it and make sure that nothing, uh, that shows up that, the other reasons why places like Wilmington and everywhere have a lawsuit.
If I'm not mistaken, wasn't there a moratorium for the state to act on it and they never acted on it? There was no longer moratorium against us passing regulations?
Yeah, we have, we have no definition of it, uh, other than what the, the state provides. There, there's nothing really in place. Uh, my biggest thing is just, uh, the safety health concerns of, uh, citizens around is kind of why it was wrong. I think, uh, a couple members of council and...
Could you help us throw this concern that you owe to, to...
Yeah, absolutely.
Any more questions, uh, Duane? Or any more comments on this issue? Hey, Duane, thank you, as always. Um, one quick note, uh, before we adjourn there, um, Corey handed out to you a questionnaire that we need to fill out and we need to send that directly, not back to Town Hall, which, uh, all of those, that correct call.
And the email was included in memo for that file and I would make sure that had to council yourselves and councilmen turn it as well.
So let's make sure, that's an important document. Let's make sure that goes on, uh, gets out.
This week, this mail?
Yes, as soon as possible. And thank you everyone for, uh, being here tonight. There being no further business of this body, I will call the Indian drummer.